Councilmember Dehart.
Here.
Councilmember Holstich. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Garner.
Here.
Four members present.
Thank you. And before we get to public comment, I wanted to pass it over to our city attorney to make a few announcements.
Yes, if I could just address a few legal issues that should be probably addressed before we get going with the meeting. As the council and the public will recall, at the November 9th City Council meeting, there was a closed session regarding the litigation involving the Forever Maryland statue. At that meeting, based on advice from legal counsel and in an abundance of caution, council members Middleton and Holstich were accused from participating in that closed session. That was based on a contribution and kind of conservative advice, a contribution dated May 30th, 2023, in the amount of $2,500 from off-top data to Lisa Middleton for her state campaign, as well as a $5,500 donation on June 27th, 2023, from Mr. Data to Councilmember Kristi Holstich's state campaign. It should be noted that there was nothing unlawful about those campaign contributions. There was a state law that was passed this last year that requires either recusal or return of those campaign contributions for certain proceedings. However, it's not entirely clear whether that new law applies to proceedings such as this, as well as litigation proceedings. In fact, there's an FPPC advice letter that suggests that it is not applicable to litigation in closed session proceedings. But again, it was done in abundance of caution. Subsequent to that council meeting, those campaign donations have both been returned in full, and so, under state law, council members Holstich and Middleton are clearly able to participate in the further proceedings involving this matter. I will also note, for the record, that on Friday, November 1st, the city received a letter from the attorney representing the committee to relocate Maryland. In that letter, they suggested that Councilmember Bernstein is precluded from participating in these matters based on the location of his business. The public should be aware that earlier this year, the city sought and received official advice from the FPPC. In that advice, the FPPC concluded that Councilmember Bernstein can participate in these proceedings, so I wanted to address those issues before we got going with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we are going to move to public comment. As you can see, there are lots of people who are here for public comment. I have a huge stack of names. If you can please silence all cell phones, really appreciate that. So, since we have so many public comments, I just want to be very clear that there's a two-minute time limit. Once your two minutes are up, that's it. Usually, I'm very generous with the time limit. I will not be today, so I will interrupt you, and I will interrupt you loudly, so please watch your time. If you are hearing the same thing that you've, that's been said over and over and over again, we do appreciate it if you can let us know that you agree be able to see the time. Your time will be right there on the bottom, so that's where with the person that just spoke, so that we can actually get to addressing the issue. you can make note of it, and you will hear a buzz, a ding, rather, once your time is Please refrain from any big public outbursts and clapping, et cetera, because that, again, up.
As I said, Tom Adamo, property owner, Indian Canyon Drive, and my tenant is Fisherman
slows us down, and we don't have enough time to then address the issue. At the two-hour
Marketing Grill. Mayor, council members, we have a few negative people that are distracting
mark, at noon, we will be taking a break regardless of where we are in this proceeding. So with that, we will move forward with public comment. You have two minutes, and if you
you from working on very important city issues. They force you to spend time on an issue
do have any paperwork that you want distributed to the city council, please hand that over
that is doing the job. It's helping the city and business owners generate income. The
to the city clerk. The city clerk will make sure that we get that. And to make, just
negative people are using the Maryland statue to boast their candidacy for city council.
to make a note, Councilmember Holstich will be joining us in about 30 minutes, and she'll
I believe they are trying to make you all look bad on the way you are handling the Maryland
be joining us via Zoom. When she arrives, we'll make note of that as well. Our first speaker is Thomas Adamo, followed by Lee Morcos.
issue. They have you thinking like a chess player, thinking of moving Maryland around Tom Adamo, property owner, Indian Canyon Drive, my tenant is Fisherman Marketing Grill. like a pawn in a chess game. Maryland is at checkmate position. Please, plus, you're handling Maryland statue like it's a hot poker, so you're thinking about adding it to a voting ballot for people to vote on. I want to make a statement. When the parking structure was put up, the city council did all the voting on that issue. They did end minute domain on me. I lost property. I lost business. I lost income, but it was the council that took charge and ran that whole thing. They did it for the city of Palm Springs, for the good of the city of Palm Springs. Do not let a handful of negative people dictate Palm Springs City Hall and city council action. The Maryland statue is a no-brainer issue. I suggest council vote to keep Maryland at its present location forever. The statue has a track record of being the city cash cow, and it's proved itself two times already. These are very troubled financial times. Cities and businesses need all the help they can get.
Mr. Adamo, your time is up.
Sorry. Can I do a little humor?
Your time is up. No, your time is up. No, your time is up. Thank you. Like I said, it will be strictly enforced with this many people. Lee Morcos, followed by Zachary Danielstone.
Good morning. Thank you for the work you're doing. Lee Morcos, Kaiser Grill, kind of new to Palm Springs. We've only been down here close to 30 years. When Maryland was first announced, maybe 10 years ago, I was scratching my head, and I was frankly suspicious and not a believer. I frankly stood against it and her. What I have come to learn, and I learned it fairly quickly, was I was dead wrong. She has been a bonanza for the city. She's a cultural icon. For those that say that Maryland is being treated in a misogynistic way, they're neglecting to look at her accomplishments as a woman, as an actress, in a time in Hollywood where women didn't have rights. The history is there. I know you've all read the stuff. I'm not going to belabor the point. Palm Springs is built with Hollywood. Our film festival is a bonanza. So if we look at this in a cultural way, from equality, from rights, from Hollywood, from modernism, she's a perfect fit for our city, and she deserves to be honored, and her story deserves to be told. All of it. I'm tired of listening to politics. Our job as citizens, and I'm not going to lecture you, is to create policy that works for the benefit of our city. I believe it's incumbent upon you to make those decisions for the good of all of us, not just the business community, but all of us. I've seen traffic in front of the museum go skyrocketing. I can't see any reason why Maryland should not stay where she is. And let's not talk about the money that's being wasted right now while we continue to politicize this and go back and forth. Taxpayer money. I can't believe I said it in less than two minutes, but I'm done for now. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Pardon me. Zachary Danielstone, followed by David Feltman. He looks like David Feltman.
Oh, it's working. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I drove through the north part of town this morning through some of our lower-income neighborhoods, and then I started to think again, what are we doing here today? We're deciding really about a matter of taste. Does Maryland belong where she is or across the street? I think it's up to this council to decide that. I looked at the Crema GoFundMe page. There's nothing on there about whether this is sexist, misogynist, promoting any kind of sexual violence. None of that is on their page. It's about, does she belong on this side of the street or the other side of the street? As a council, I think you should adopt option C, and I would add a resolution to that that Jeff Ballinger can help me write, which is to take that money from the election, $33,000 to $35,000, and use that money to reduce user fees for our lower and middle-income children who pay user fees to go to camp in the winter and the summer. Just decide this issue as a council, take that money, and do something good with it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Doug Watson, followed by Deborah Havel.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, staff, city council members. I had sent you an email earlier last week, so I apologize for the length of that. So, while I will not go through that, I will approach this a little differently in the form of what do great brands do for people, citizens and tourism alike? And I think, as you think about what the brand of Palm Springs has done over the past decade, how it's evolved and how it's become the premier, one of the premier destinations in the world, you think about how you've aligned with the tourism industry, how you've had to balance the citizenship issues, and how you enjoy the evolution of the tourism industry and how it's brought benefit to the city. I'm a member of PS Resorts, so I want to be clear that I am in support of leaving the Forever Maryland statue in its place, and I stand on that position very simply. I think having the statue stay is continuing to be accretive to the city. When you think about creating great brands and destinations around the world, one of the key cornerstones of them is that they're pedestrian in nature, that they offer unique tourism opportunities and citizenship opportunities. And as the city has evolved that side of Palm Canyon, and you think about the park, the statue, the iconic mountains that frame all of them, and the businesses that have evolved, it seems to be a win-win situation for all of the members of the community. So today, I ask you to consider measure C as your option. I'm in support of that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah Havel, followed by Kevin Comer.
Good morning, everyone. I have a slightly different take on this. I think Maryland is great, and she's a lot of fun. I have no problem with her being located in Palm Springs. In fact, I would say we could use a few more things like that. Tourists of all sorts, and even people who live here, enjoy being around that statue. For me, it's not a matter of taste. We all have different approaches to art. For me, it's the idea that the city council voted to allow her
Please go ahead.
to allow that statue to be placed in the middle of a hard-won street with a through view to the museum from Palm Canyon. And it was a temporary three-year placement. Fine. Three years is going to be up, and I think what we should do is an option that has not been presented on this agenda, which is relocate the statue to another spot in town that does all the good things that people who advocate for the Maryland statue to be downtown are proposing. A bigger space, a safer space, and a space that does not occlude the view of the museum from Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Comer, followed by Peter Maruzzi.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Kevin Comer, and I'm here speaking today personally and not as a part of any group that I'm affiliated with. And I should note, I'm not affiliated with either the Crema Group or the Palm Springs Maryland Group. There are two things that I find jarring about Maryland. One is architectural, and one is social. First, its placement on Museum Way, in my personal view, is just simply an error and one that can be easily rectified. Our city's founders recognized the importance of the horizontal plane to the valley, specifically Palm Springs, and you can see that reflected in all of the original architecture throughout the city. That horizontal plane reflects the view of the surrounding mountains, such that for most anywhere in the valley, you can see across a vast distance to the mountain beyonds, to the mountains beyond. We're sacrificing that now with a lot of the new construction projects, the loss of the Spa Hotel, and the Thompson that seems to have no end to its verticality. The Maryland statue continues this with its vertical nature, coupled with its prominent placement directly on Museum Way in front of the horizontal plane of the mountains behind it. Second, and more importantly, is the social disregard that it seems to place on women who have suffered abuse or trauma at the hands of more powerful men. To me, this statue is one that might have been placed in a 1980s America, but not in a 2020s post-Harry Weinstein America. Looking at it particularly when I'm with friends who I know have also suffered abuse, it's hard not to feel as though that abuse is being continued even after her death with the continued commercialization of her fame. I've had many talks with true experts on women's issues, which of course I am not, about Maryland and how best to reconcile the benefits of the statue with the downside. To a person, they recommend turning it into a teaching moment. One example of a way to do this is to erect columns around the statue with plaques on them telling her story and the context of today's America, not that of the 1950s. And we could enlist someone like Jermaine Greer or Kate Bornstein to elevate the story in such a way that it could also more truly turn the entire statue into something that even more people would consider art.
Mr. Comer, your time is up. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
And let's, I just want the record to reflect that Councilmember Holstich did arrive at the meeting via Zoom at 10:07, so she is listening into this. Next speaker is Peter Maruzzi, followed by Patsy Moreno.
Mayor Garner, Mayor Protem Bernstein, and council members, I'm speaking today on behalf of the Palm Springs Modern Committee. When the new downtown plan was approved by voters in 2016, a key goal was to create a new street, Museum Way, to improve the visibility of the Palm Springs Art Museum from Palm Canyon Drive because, since the 1970s, it had been blocked by the massive desert fashion plaza. The Palm Springs Art Museum was designed in 1976 by one of Palm Springs' most important architects, E. Stuart Williams. Due to its architectural distinction and monumental presence as the city's premier cultural institution, it was officially designated a Palm Springs Class I Historic Site and also listed in the highly prestigious National Register of Historic Places. And then along came Maryland. Since her placement in the middle of Museum Way several years ago, it has become painfully evident that Maryland blocks the central view of the landmark museum building, becoming a major advocacy issue for the Palm Springs Modern Committee, or PS ModCom. A key part of our mission is to enhance visibility and access to significant historic landmarks such as the Palm Springs Art Museum. We and many others believe the solution is to relocate Maryland to another site so that the view of the art museum is unobstructed. To be clear, we do not object to Maryland herself, a highly popular tourist attraction. What we want is for Maryland to be moved to another location, such as the northeast portion of the new downtown park, or perhaps to Francis Stevens Park near the large fountain situated on the southwest corner of Palm Canyon and La Jolla Road. Overall, the Palm Springs Art Museum is too important historically, architecturally, and culturally to be concealed by an enormous statue. It's time to move Maryland to another site. Therefore, PS ModCom requests that you vote for option D, which orders a report on the impact of the measures so that you'll have sufficient information to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Patsy Moreno, followed by Catherine Desha.
Good morning, all. My name is Patsy Moreno, and I serve as the second vice chair at the Palm Springs Art Museum. I'm here to read a statement from the Palm Springs Art Museum. The Palm Springs Art Museum recognizes that the Forever Maryland statue is enjoyed by a number of residents and visitors. Given that its placement is now once again part of the public debate, and the museum can weigh in on the urban design issues associated by its location, the Board of Trustees of the museum reaffirms the museum's commitment to the 2016 Downtown Palm Springs Plan, which created an unobstructed corridor from Palm Canyon Drive. We fully support the placement of the statue in the adjacent park where it was originally intended to be, or another location where the public can continue to view it. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Desha, followed by Liz Armstrong.
Good morning, mayor and council. I'm Catherine Desha. Two years ago, I joined the effort to protest the placement of the Maryland sculpture in front of the museum. I helped create the petition to formally register our complaint to city council. A few numbers. As of your last census, there were 45,000 people living in Palm Springs. 42,000 residents and visitors signed our petition. 248 made additional comments. Here are a few of their words describing the sculpture. Bad taste, embarrassment, no class, disgrace, misogynistic, hypersexualized, cheap folly, trashy, abomination, disgusting, degrading, travesty, derivative, tone-deaf, cheesy, outdated, thoughtless, tasteless, offensive. Finally, someone said, "Our city should be a model for equality." This is not. So then this morning, I went onto some websites that promote Palm Springs. I was curious about whether or not Maryland was a top attraction. I visited TripAdvisor, Visit Palm Springs, Visit Greater Palm Springs, PS.com, and The Getaway. Not one had Maryland as a top attraction. Not one even had a photograph of Maryland as a top attraction. Palm Springs is a community known for its world-class beauty, architecture, and design. Let's keep it a place of class, not trash. Thank you.
Liz Armstrong, followed by Chris Menad.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Liz Armstrong, an art historian and a former director of the Palm Springs Art Museum. Throughout my career, I've studied the purpose and power of images, and I speak to this expertise today in the context of Forever Maryland. By virtue of being 26 feet high and centrally located in the city, Forever Maryland is a public monument, and monuments are public images erected in public spaces to represent social values and social ideals. And they can also perpetuate old cultural values and power relationships. We're asking the city to think about the symbolism of the Statue of Maryland, which captures the actress in a perpetual state of having air blown forever up her ass. In the era of Me Too, at a time when the country is decrying sexual violence against women, this tone-deaf piece should not represent our city. This objectification of Maryland is an old-time, straight-male fantasy of a woman who, if she were alive today, would have been front and center in the Me Too movement. I want to also say to the city council and remind you of another recent controversy related to a public statue. After more than two years of debate and much money spent on lawsuits, Palm Springs removed the statue of Frank Bogart, former mayor, in front of City Hall. The city's Civil Rights Commission argued that Bogart's statue was offensive reminder of a legacy that banished people of color from the city limits. Yet, at the very same time it was hearing this argument, city council was hearing from its citizens about another similar legacy problem, and one that sexually objectifies a woman on a gigantic scale and is similarly offensive, and a public reminder of the legacy of sexism in this country. At the very least, this monument to misogyny should be removed from its central location in Palm Springs, and we can do better. We can, we can't change the past, but we can do better in the present. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Chris Menad, followed by Trina Turk.
Honorable council members, it's actually Chris Menrad, but that's okay. I want to say, on every purchase that we do, whether it's a local shop or something like Amazon Online, we all are paying a 1% tax, and that goes toward Measure J. Measure J was created in 2016. The primary reason at that point was to help a developer finish the Morban Downtown Mall. It was a very hard sell to the citizens, and one of the very important trade-offs that we made, among many others, was that our beloved Palm Springs Art Museum would finally have full open view from Palm Canyon, so that you could see it, people could appreciate it. It's a world-class treasure. It's an extremely important architectural building. It has amazing integrity. It's very special, and most cities would give their right arm to have an institution like that located within their borders. So, Creative Museum Way offered, for the first time, this clear and uncluttered access to the museum, and that was one of the promises given to us for that 1% tax that we still pay every day, whether we're buying, like I said, something at Amazon, or I'm having dinner at, you know, Zen or whatever it is, I'm paying that 1% tax. The statue was then hastily placed after many years of discussion and public input from the park where it was designed to go into the middle of the street. The public discussion had created that specific place for her in the park. Then, with little warning, it got moved. We were told it was only going to be temporary, if you can even remotely call three years temporary. A California court decided that three years was not temporary. It seems like whenever there's citizen, so-called citizen input, somehow it gets changed later on down the road. So what I'm saying is, if you vote today on the downtown initiative, you're actually taking away that important open throughway to the museum that we all fought so hard and that we're paying for with every single purchase that we make here.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Trina Turk, followed by Janice Lyle.
Good morning, mayor and city council. I represent the Committee to Relocate Maryland. Today's agenda fails to include the most obvious solution to this controversy. Just move the statue. Here's a recap of contradictions in the city's handling of this matter. November 2020, an additional public hearing called for by a city staff report was never held. December 2020, the city signs a licensing agreement with PS Resorts that directly contradicts the 2016 downtown plan that citizens fought for, which included Museum Way. The licensing agreement includes a provision to conduct a study on the economic impacts of the placement of the statue at the property. In the ensuing three years, this study has never been done. In January of 2021, Crema's attorney writes to inquire what happened to the additional public hearing. A month later, the city attorney replies, quote, "Despite the November 12, 2020, staff report indicating that the city would conduct a public hearing in order to permanently vacate vehicular access to Museum Way, city staff and the city attorney's office believe that it may be difficult, if not impossible, for the city council to make the statutorily required findings that are necessary for a street vacation. Specifically, California Streets and Highways Code section provides that a street may be vacated by a city council only if the city council finds, from all the evidence submitted, that the street is unnecessary for present or prospective public use. Here, because the statue is being installed on a temporary basis, it is doubtful that the city council could make the statutory finding," unquote. And just to reiterate, that was a letter from the city attorney. This begs the question, what happened to temporary? PS Resorts and the city seem to have amnesia in regards to the status temporary. February 2023, the Court of Appeals rules the city's long-term closure of a public street is illegal and a violation of the vehicle code.
Ms. Turk, your time is up. Thank you. Janice Lyle, followed by John Scott Bowerman.
I'm Janice Lyle. I'm a former executive director of the Palm Springs Art Museum, as well as Liz, and I just want to reiterate the position that was stated by the Board of Trustees of the museum. That is a considered position based on the role of the museum in this community related to art and architecture, and the closure of the visibility of the museum from Palm Canyon, something we worked on for 20 years, is a slap in the face of everyone in this community who cares about the part of the community which is tied to the unique Specifically, California Streets and Highways Code section provides that a street may be vacated by a city council only if the city council finds, from all the evidence submitted, that the street is unnecessary for present or prospective public use. Here, because the statue is being installed on a temporary basis, it is doubtful that the city council could make the statutory finding," unquote. And just to reiterate, that was a letter from the city attorney. This begs the question, what happened to temporary? P.S. Resorts and the city seem to have amnesia in regards to the status temporary. February 2023, the Court of Appeals rules the city's long-term closure of a public street is illegal and a violation of the vehicle code.
Ms. Turk, your time is up. Thank you. Janice Lyle, followed by John Scott Bowerman.
I'm Janice Lyle. I'm a former executive director of the Palm Springs Art Museum, as well as Liz. And I just want to reiterate the position that was stated by the Board of Trustees of the museum. That is a considered position based on the role of the museum in this community related to art and architecture, and the closure of the visibility of the museum from Palm Canyon, something we worked on for 20 years, is a slap in the face of everyone in this community who cares about the part of the community which is tied to the uniqueness of its architectural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. John Scott Bowerman, followed by Nona Watson.
Good morning, everyone. My name is John Barrowman, a full-time resident of Palm Springs with my husband, architect Scott Gill. I own two homes here in Palm Springs, ours and one for my elderly parents. Palm Springs is the perfect blend of pop culture, architecture, and art, all of which my husband and I adore. We pass the Marilyn statue every day and see the thousands of people a month the statue attracts, some of whom I've seen then walking to the museum. I'm sure the museum's foot traffic has gone up. When I post pictures of the statue to my 3.5 million followers on social media, they always comment how much they love Marilyn. Living here full-time, particularly in the summer months, it's great to see people downtown due to the statue. When part-time residents and other opposers against the statue saw that the majority of Palm Springs residents liked the statue, they changed the narrative, turning it into a Me Too issue. Marilyn was at her peak of her career when she hit that pose. Marilyn Monroe was also in complete control of her sexuality, and in the situation, she controlled the narrative on that day. Having that control on that day proved her strength as an artist and a woman. We are a state and city that does not take away or move what we don't like. We are inclusive, and Marilyn should stay where she is. City money should not be wasted on an election just to suffice pretentious part-time residents.
Next speaker is Nona Watson, followed by Octavio Fernandez.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Nona Watson, the CEO of the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Palm Springs Chamber, we would like to support the City Council and hope you will adopt the specific plan amendment without alteration and without an election. And on a personal note, as someone who uses our downtown park on a regular basis and brings thousands of people down to our downtown, I feel really safe and secure knowing that the street is closed. The street's never been open, so there's not confusion for people. Are they using the street? Are they not using the street? I would like to see the downtown experience expanded. I'd like to see more concerts. Right now, we do seven concerts in the park where we bring thousands of people to downtown. I'd like to see it even more. So I find comfort in the fact that it's safe down there. And as far as Marilyn goes, I diddle the fact that, you know, the cultural icon that she is, there's, I don't have to look at a website to know what a tourist attraction she is. I answer the phone every day in my office. I speak to the visitors that come into our office. I personally talk to them. The comments about Marilyn have always been positive. The calls are, "Is she still here?" Because we would like to come to your city to see this icon. I've never had somebody come in and complain about that statue in our downtown. And so, on behalf of the Board of Directors, again, we support and hope that you would adopt the specific plan amendment without alteration and without an election. Thank you.
Octavio Fernandez, followed by Mark Ostowich.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Octavio Fernandez. I'm a lifelong resident and native of Palm Springs. I'm also a part of the Downtown Group, Grit Development, that developed the area where Marilyn is presently located. My belief is that Marilyn is an iconic piece of art in an iconic location with an iconic view. The feedback that I hear from people on the street as I'm walking around our various properties is always positive. Our tourists frequently, I overhear saying, "Oh, there's Marilyn", and off they go to see Marilyn. I fully endorse the placement of Marilyn where she's currently located. I believe that the council should adopt Measure C. And as part of the Downtown Group, we have two parcels of land which would be impacted. However, we could easily redesign those two parcels so as to not affect our property. Thank you.
Mark Ostowich, followed by Randy Sturgis.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. It seems like there are three options on the table this morning. And no matter what happens, this matter is going to go to a decision by someone. And one option that you have before you is to adopt an ordinance without modification reflecting the request and the petitions that initiated this process. And in doing so, you would bring this step, and it is a step in the process, to a conclusion sooner than later and at much less expense. So I urge you to adopt the ordinance without modification and move this process along, rather than prolong it by sending it to either the general election in '24 or the primary election. And I also want to say, my wife and I own a restaurant, Clandestino, that faces the Marilyn statue. So whenever I'm in the restaurant, one thing I do notice is that, hot days and cold days, there are hundreds of people that come from Palm Canyon Drive and other directions to see the statue, to have their photographs taken, and to enjoy it. So you can say what you want about it, but I, from firsthand knowledge, can tell you that it is a significant draw to the area. So thank you very much for your time.
Randy Sturgis, followed by Scott Gill.
Hello, council members and citizens. I think the small group that wants to-
Mr. Sturgis, you need to speak into the mic, or else the public can't hear you on the TV.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I think the small group that opposes or wants to move the Marilyn statue reminds me of another group that tried to hurt Palm Springs, and that was the group that wanted to end short-term rentals. They were both very small groups of very, very vocal people. Is the statue kitsch? Yes. But kitsch is the first cousin of mid-century modernism. How else do you explain people hanging macrame on their walls? And the museum has no aesthetic objection to it. This is the biggest tourist attraction in Palm Springs. No, people don't come here just to see the statue. They come for modernism. But when they're here, they see the statue. Tens of thousands of people. And the museum attendance is up since it's there. She's the first locally-produced icon, really, in Palm Springs. She was discovered in the '40s around the pool of the racket club and discovered by one of the William Morris agents. And she loved that iconic pose. Contrary to the people who are trying to co-opt her for the Me Too movement, which I totally believe in, this has nothing to do with the Me Too movement. She loved that iconic pose and photograph. So let's not forget that 20 years ago, Downtown Palm Springs was a ghost town with an empty ball that had sat there for 10 years. We need everything to help boost tourism. And I'm not talking about moving it somewhere. When you measure the thousands of people that go there, I'm not talking about people walking down Palm Canyon. I'm talking about discreet people who walk over to the statue. So let's vote on, if you vote, if the town voted on this, it would be the same as the rental situation. It would be overwhelmingly-
Mr. Sturgis, your time is up.
-voted to keep.
Scott Gill, followed by Bruce Hoven.
Hello. I'm a 10-year resident at Palm Springs.
You need to speak into the mic, Mr. Gill. It's over there.
Oh, this one, sorry. I got the wrong one. Yeah, I'm a 10-year resident at Palm Springs. Studied architecture and town planning in London University College. And what strikes me is, after so long of the view being blocked to the museum, this view's been, the vista's been opened up, but the people want to turn it back into a road, which seemed absolutely bizarre to me. It needs to be a pedestrianized walkway, all the way from the Palm Springs Museum, all the way through, if they can, to the new Agua Caliente Cultural Center, because that's almost exactly on axis with it. The whole route should be pedestrianized. It should be enlivened with statues, sculptures, fountains, whatever. The idea of just taking the statue away and turning this back into a road is extraordinary to me. Because not only is she a huge cultural icon that attracts thousands of visitors, people love it, people get so much enjoyment out of her presence there, but the idea that you should remove her, it just seems snobbish and elitist to say that kind of pop-up like that has no place in front of the museum, that it's somehow degenerate art, that it should be swept out of the way or pushed to one side. It should be part of the enjoyment of the whole of this pedestrian axis that links these two big cultural centers in Palm Springs, which can really, it needs enhancement. It doesn't need subtraction. It needs addition. And I think maybe missing a huge opportunity to build something really important for the city that links these two major cultural centers in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Hoven, followed by Michael Stern.
Good morning, everybody. So Crema lacks any data to support anything with their positions other than "we don't like it there." That's their opinion. Here's some data. Like parking, you can count people with cameras these days. Attendance going up to the Marilyn statue, September, 52,000. October, 59,000. November, 81,000. Thanksgiving week alone, 24,000 people walked within 25 feet of the Marilyn statue. And we're not in high tourist season yet. Locals take their guests staying with them since Marilyn is a must-see for any tourists that are staying with them. The November 17 letter from the P.S. Art Museum, and I quote, "The results speak for themselves. In 2023, our attendance was 55% above pre-pandemic levels." Well, I don't claim, or we don't claim, all of this increase is due to Marilyn. The facts are Museum Way never had tens of thousands of visitors on that street. And it's not the park attracting them, since when you look at the cameras, over 80% of the visitors stay on the south-left side of the street, not on the right side. How many visitors would come to Marilyn and then continue to, how many visitors come to Marilyn then continue west to the museum? 30% of the people who walk up to the front continue down Museum Road, which was 57,000 visitors in the last three months. And finally, in a survey conducted last year, 1,000 individual visitors were interviewed in person at Marilyn's location. 87% responded visiting Marilyn was the main reason they walked down Museum Way. The data and facts are clear. Her current location is a magnet for our local businesses and the art museum. Please vote today to adopt this initiative.
Michael Stern, followed by Peggy Trot.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I am a business owner here in Palm Springs, and I happen to pass that intersection routinely. And one thing I've noticed, I don't have anything against the Marilyn statue. It is clearly a success. I have no doubt about that. The issue of the placement is it's in the middle of a very crowded intersection, even if the statue was not there. Bolardo is a very heavily-traffic road, shared by bicyclists, pedestrians, and cars. And that already creates a difficult situation. With that massive number of people trying to get over to the statue, it just creates chaos over there. And I really think it sort of lacks safety in terms of pedestrians and people wanting to visit the statue. Also, there's virtually no parking around there. I think the statue needs to be moved to a place where it is more ultimately accessible to a larger group of people. Right now, as someone quoted the numbers of the people there, they are squished in on that little, narrow road. And the statue, something of that scale, needs breathing room around it. It was actually more successful in its initial Palm Springs location, where people could surround the statue. There was parking nearby. And it just, something of that scale just needs breathing room. Right now, it's sort of crunched in in the middle of a very, very populated area. And I think it would be in the best interest of the city and the statue to move it to a more location, to make it more accessible to more people, where they can move around the statue and really have a chance to enjoy it. So I am in firm support of Option D. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Peggy Trot, followed by Scott Connolly.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Peggy Trot, and I'm both a resident and the GM of the Roman Hotel. I see the benefit daily of having Marilyn stay where she is. I live in the neighborhood, so I walk my dog past her. And I also drive past when I'm out and about. Locals and visitors are safe while taking pictures with her. Attendance at the art museum is up over 2019, pre-Marilyn, per their own statistics. Closing Museum Way has never been a traffic issue. Please consider vacating the street and keeping Marilyn where she is. Thank you.
Scott Connolly, followed by Max Dearda.
Good morning. I would urge you to follow the previous plans that supported, that was supported by the public at the time that I helped, was privileged to participate in the general plan for the downtown. That's a big privilege to participate that as a citizen here. I would, if you consider how the closure might affect public safety, I think that's a big issue. You know, if, there may be some big structures going up there. There are many plans for additional buildings and structures in there. How is that gonna, you know, how is the fire apparatus gonna get in there? And how do they maneuver around and respond to any major situation there? Many issues such as, that we've been dealing with here as the, what to do with this. I had, I don't know if I'm overlooking something. It seems like there's a simple solution. Just move her over 100 feet or to another location. She's still here. She'll get, lots of tourists will find her there. And I would think that there'll be just as many Instagram photos taken, which should satisfy anyone who's counting. Thank you.
Max Dearda, followed by Afthab Dada.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think you'll be making a terrible mistake if the Museum Way opens up for vehicle access. Instead of trying to close streets for pedestrian use, like many cities in the world are trying to do, we are discussing opening it up for vehicles. I mean, this, this street should even further close so pedestrians can walk from downtown even further to, you know, to other areas behind the, behind downtown, closer to Marilyn Monroe. I think she's perfect where she is right now. She fits right in, right there with the view of the mountain behind her. And she's so close to all the shops in downtown Palm Springs. Residents and tourists alike can enjoy the view, maybe take a picture, walk up to the museum, or back to downtown to eat or shop. I'm urging the city, I'm requesting the City Council to adopt the measure. Thank you.
Afthab Dada, followed by Michael Wooliger.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. That, for the past several years, our city has gone through so much in footing taxpayers' dollars for all these nuisance lawsuits. It's time for our City Council to make a motion and adopt the initiative you have to stop this nuisance. All we're trying to do is have those dollars, as my good friend David Feldman said, "Use it for better use." The reason we brought in Marilyn again was she is the catalyst, and she is the draw. And I don't know how many have had the opportunity to see that the world's largest brand, Marriott, has 300 million loyal customers. Guess what? They had their conference with their top customers. The number-one feature in their conference was Marilyn. So it's time for us to make a move, stop hemorrhaging our taxpayers' dollars, because she definitely is the draw. And honestly, ask all the merchants surrounding it. What else can I say? Thank you.
Michael Wooliger, followed by Mark Davis.
Thank you all, and good morning. I just want to point out briefly that it is the modernist legacy of Palm Springs that draws thousands of tourists to our city every year. Modernism contributes millions of dollars to our hotels, restaurants, and shops, much more than Marilyn. They look at Marilyn when they're here. They like it. I get it. But that's not why they come here. Modern, and that's provable. That's hard facts. That's hard facts. So I believe the city should honor this modernist legacy and move the sculpture to a less obtrusive spot nearby, one that doesn't obstruct our view of the iconic modernist museum. Compromise here is a win-win for Palm Springs and easily accomplished without complex ballot initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Davis, and then we'll move on to our Zoom speakers.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Mark Davis. I'm a full-time resident of Palm Springs and have been watching the whole downtown project now for... Since, I don't know, 1996 and onwards. It's an ever-changing scenario. First of all, I just want to mention that we talk about visitors. In 2020, before Marilyn was standing there, Modernism Week had their biggest-ever attendance of 120,000 people. So they didn't come to see Marilyn. They came to see Palm Springs' brand of modernism architecture. That is our key element in architecture heritage tourism. That's the moneymaker right there. And the point I want to make is that what the council is deciding on today will determine whether or not you value the civic process that comes about making these decisions, or if you just like the council who made the decision that fateful November date, just to throw everything out the window for years of planning and just make a decision with less than 20 minutes of discussion to close a street, then that will be your legacy. The background, since 2009, there has always been a plan to open up the grid downtown. That's clear. In 2000, the city hired a consultant, MIG, I believe it's called, to gain input from the community on the downtown project. And we had... We had seminars February 2011, January 2011, October 2012. And then in 2013 and 2014, the city council, the architecture advisory board, everyone reviewed all of the plans. They loved the fact that Marilyn was in the park. We have always been told Marilyn was going to be in the park.
Thank you, your time is up.
The city's website stated that for years, so...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
We're now moving to Zoom comments. We have George Yin, followed by Gary Winick, followed by David Perry. So George Win? Or George Yin? I'm not sure.
Yes. Hi, this is George Yin. Hope you can all hear me. Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is George Yin. I'm an attorney with Kaufman Legal Group, an election and political law firm retained by the proponents of the initiative in an effort to ensure that all requirements and procedures required by law are scrupulously adhered to. As the city staff has reported, these processes were indeed followed. I also am joined today by my colleague, Gary Winick, who specializes in conflict of interest in government ethics law and was the former director of enforcement at the Fair Political Practices Commission. And just wanted to indicate to the staff and to the city council and mayor that we reviewed certain letters that were submitted by Amy Mintier and Michael Rivera over the weekend, intimating that there might be some conflict of interest issues involved. We reiterate that we have reviewed these letters and that all laws and processes were followed, and that there is absolutely no reason for the city council not to move forward with their actions today, whatever it is that they decide. We also want to reiterate that it is our view that no recusals are required at this meeting. We are available for any questions that the council or the mayor or staff may have, and we will remain here in the meeting and be available to all of you. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Winick, unless that was for both of you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is Gary Winick. That was indeed for both of us, but we're here to answer any questions that began. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our last comment is from David Perry.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, first of all, I want to thank you all for the time, attention, and care you... One once said, "Democracy is messy," but it is the best respect, time, and energy all of you put into this. I also, although I respectfully disagree with our... In disagreement with our Protect Our Marilyn campaign, of which I'm the spokesperson.
David, we can't hear you. David, your connection is cutting in and out. David, we can't hear your comments.
...of us.
I don't think he can hear us either.
We might want to move on to the next speaker and then hold him for later.
We don't have a next speaker. Can give him a call really quick. Oh, Zachary Daniel Stone? No? Okay. Let's see if we can get David Perry real quick. All right. That's not working. You try him. Go ahead and try. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate that you listened and didn't go over your time and sat down when I asked you to. That makes me really, really happy, because I was very worried about that. So thank you very much for being so respectful. All right. We, at this time, will move on to the only item on our agenda, which is discussing the qualification of initiative... Of the initiative measure proposing to amend the downtown Palm Springs specific plan to facilitate the vacation of a portion of Museum Way between Bellardo Road and Museum Drive in order to facilitate the permanent installation of the Forever Maryland statue at that location. Do we have him? Okay. We'll go to David real quick, and then we'll go back.
Okay, David.
Thank you so much. I apologize for the connection. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for their time and consideration of this issue. We know it's a controversial issue, but controversy is just another word for dialogue. And even though as the spokesperson for the Protect Our Marilyn campaign, I want to thank the opponents, who have also dedicated a lot of time and energy and thought. However, I want to strongly support keeping the... Marilyn statue where she is, keeping the street closed as a wonderful pedestrian vehicle that attracts both business, tourism, and favorable attention to Palm Springs. Coming out of COVID, the Forever Maryland statue has brought a great deal of joy to residents and tourists alike, and I urge the city council to keep her there. And I believe once she is permanently located there, many of our opponents will come to be our supporters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll pass it over to our city attorney for a staff report.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public. The item before you today is an action on a planning document, either by way of an election of the voters or a decision of the city council. I wanted to point out for you and for the public that today's discussion and decision is not a vote on the street vacation itself, nor is it a decision on the agreement that the city has with P S Resorts for the placement of the Forever Maryland statue. Obviously, the decision before you today does impact those two other items, but this decision is not the same as those two decisions. So by way of background, on August 31st this past year, the city clerk's office received a notice of intent to circulate an initiative petition from a group of Palm Springs voters seeking to qualify a measure that would amend the downtown Palm Springs specific plan. Specifically, the measure would amend various sections of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan to officially rename Main Street to Museum Way and to remove from that specific plan references to and depictions of that portion of Museum Way between Bellardo Road and Museum Way as a designated public street. The proponents stated purpose of the specific plan is to facilitate the city council's ultimate permanent vacation of that portion of Museum Way between Bellardo Road and Museum Drive, so that it is no longer a public street. Such street vacation, which was sought by the Crema group, would require a separate action of the city council following a notice public hearing. It should be pointed out that any action the city council makes today or action by the voters would not require the city council to vacate the street. The city council could, following that notice public hearing, decide not to vacate the street, or the council could vote, regardless of today's decision or the voter's decision later on, the council could decide not to extend the agreement with P S Resorts. Those are still options that are available to the city council in the future, regardless of what happens today or at any subsequent vote by the voters. In accordance with California Elections Code, Section 9203, the city attorney prepared a ballot title and summary as required for the proposed measure. And on September 12th, 2023, the city clerk submitted the ballot title and summary to the proponents so that they could begin circulating that petition for signatures. As required by the California Elections Code, 10% of the registered voters of the city would be required in order to qualify that petition for an initiative. And at the time, the number of registered voters was 28,862 voters. Subsequently, on October 5th of this year, the proponents filed the signed petition with the city clerk's office. Those petitions were examined by the city clerk's office, and the signature verification was conducted by the Riverside County Register of Voters. On November 2nd of this year, the city clerk received official notification from the Riverside County Voters... Register of Voters that the signature verification process was complete and that the petition contained a sufficient number of qualified signatures. The city clerk's office subsequently notified the proponents that the petition had garnered a sufficient number of qualified signatures. Now, the process for local initiative elections is a little bit different from state initiatives. The council and the public is probably aware, once state initiatives receive the required number of signatures, those initiatives automatically go on the ballot. For local initiatives, it's a little bit different. Before it gets placed on the ballot, for local initiatives, the council is given an opportunity to decide whether the council wants to make other options, including adopting the initiative itself without alteration. So there are about four different options that the council has before you today. The first is to adopt the measure outright without alteration at this meeting or at a meeting within 10 days after this meeting. Under this scenario, there would be no election. The second option is to submit the measure to the voters at the next regular municipal election, and that would be November 5th, 2024. The third option is to submit the measure to the voters at a special municipal election that occurs between 88 and 103 days after the council calls the election. Under this option, the council could choose either the statewide primary election based on today's date, which is March 5th, 2024, or the council could choose a standalone special election for some other date that occurs between that 88 and 103 days. I'll note that if the council intends to choose this option, staff would strongly recommend scheduling a special municipal election for March 5th, 2024, based on the cost differences. According to the Register of Voters, the cost difference would be significant. A vote that is scheduled for March 5th would be around $33,000 to $35,000, whereas a vote that is conducted on an off-date would be upwards of $100,000. And so, again, if the council is inclined to choose a special election, staff would strongly recommend that you choose the primary election date. It also tends to encourage voters if it's on a date that is scheduled with other elections. And then finally, the Elections Code also provides the council with an opportunity to direct staff to bring back a report within 30 days, considering various issues such as land use, public services, development regulations, and whatnot. Under this scenario, if the council chose to direct staff to bring back such a report, that would kind of throw off any opportunity for an election on March 5th. The council could still choose to send it to the vote on either November 5th, 2024, or a standalone election, but we would miss the March 5th election date. In addition, if the council chose that report, this council would still have to make a decision to either send it to the vote or adopt the measure outright. Those two options, those two essential options are still at the council's door. I'll point out that any of these options, A, B, or C, each require an affirmative vote of a majority of the council to pass, so three votes of the city council. I indicated the cost of the election would be significantly different depending on when the elections are. So therefore, staff is requesting council direction as to which option it wishes to pursue. Again, if the council wishes to place the measure on the next regular municipal election or a special municipal election, we would ask for appropriate direction, and direction is included in the resolutions. There's also an ordinance, should the council choose to adopt the ordinance, adopting the specific plan amendment. My colleague Jim Priest from the city attorney's office and I are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So what we are looking at now is which of those we... How we'd like to move forward on that issue of whether or not we bring this to the ballot or we adopt it outright. Do any of my colleagues have a particular urge to start? No? Okay. Well, then, what I do... I will just make a couple of comments based on some things that I heard. One, we have no idea what Marilyn Monroe would think about this. And I just want to be very clear that that's not an argument I think that we should continue with, because we have no idea whether or not she would like this or hate it. The other thing is, please don't take away from the incredible work that Adam Lerner and his team have done with the Palm Springs Art Museum. It cannot be understated what that team has done. It is a very local Coachella Valley team that has created an incredibly diverse portfolio that they brought to the museum to attract people. Whether or not the street closure has an impact on that is another question, but those two... Those things happened at the same time. And I really just want to lift up the work that that team has done, because it's been truly incredible in transforming this museum into something that can be available for everyone of all ages. So I just wanted to make those two comments. Mayor Protime, did you want to go ahead?
Yes, so... So I just want to address some additional questions, I guess, to the city attorney. So all the changes to the specific plan determine whether this will be a vehicular street or pedestrian?
That's a good question. So the downtown specific plan is a planning document. In other words, it indicates what uses are allowed on private property within that area, and it also includes depictions of proposed public facilities such as streets. As a planning document, it does not, by itself, get rid of or create a public street. That, because it's now a public street right now, in order to change it from a public street to pedestrian-only or no access, that would require a street vacation, which is a separate process that occurs following a notice public hearing. So, again, the planning document that is before you or that may be put before the voters does not, in and of itself, get rid of the vehicular access on this portion of the road. That would require a separate street vacation.
And once we do the street... If the street vacation does happen, it could then remain a pedestrian throughway?
Correct. Under the California Streets and Highways Code, the council could vacate vehicular access but still maintain pedestrian access, emergency access, trail access. That is allowed for under state law.
And if we... If we adopt the specific plan, or the voters adopt it, and the street is vacated, the option... There is still then the next step is to... Whether to keep the statue there or not, creating the open view?
Correct. So even if the specific plan is adopted either by the council or by the voters, even if the council ultimately vacates the street, there would still be the decision point of the city council as to what to do with that underlying property, whether to allow this artwork or other artwork to be in... artwork or other artwork to be in that location. That would still be up to the city council.
Okay. And for option D, where we have 30 days for additional reports, even if we adopt the street, this changes the specific plan, we can still request those reports for the street vacation public hearing?
You could. As a practical matter, the street vacation process is much like a land use application process, where the, there's an application where the city staff will review that application. It will go before the Planning Commission. There will be environmental review conducted as part of that process, and the public will be notified of the ultimate public hearings that occur as part of the process. So there is still a very robust information gathering and public review process involved in the street vacation itself.
And there's a public hearing for both the street vacation, and it will be a council decision as to whether to, a separate one about whether to keep the statue. We knew the agreement with P.S. Resorts.
Correct. There is a public hearing, a notice public hearing before the city council, and it will also go before the Planning Commission for their recommendation to the city council.
Okay. And currently, when does the place agreement with P.S. Resorts expire?
The agreement with P.S. Resorts provides for the expiration of the three-year term approximately February 22nd of 2024.
Okay. And then, although it says that we're vacating the street for potential permanent placement, we could decide that it could be three years or five years?
Yep.
We don't, doesn't have to be a permanent?
Correct.
Okay. And you mentioned the fees, the fees for the special election would be, how much?
The registrar?
If it's on March 5th?
If it were on March 5th, the registrar estimated that it would be between $33,000 and $35,000. If it were on another date other than March 5th or November 5th, it would be approximately $101,000. We don't have an exact date for what it would be if the council sent it to the November 5th, 2024 date. Presumably, it would be something less than that off date.
Okay. And that obviously doesn't include what proponents of both sides would spend, which is usually hundreds of thousands.
Correct. That's just the costs of the city of conducting the election.
Okay. And there's, the other question is, we've had, I understand we've had approximately $500,000 in legal fees to date, I mean, have been spent by both parties, is that right?
By both parties, yes. That's my understanding.
Okay, okay. No offense to lawyers who make a, have to make a living, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of money that lawyers are getting. And when, when the original specific plan was done, was there any discussion about it being a pedestrian walkway? Or was it always assumed that it needed to be for traffic?
That is something I'll defer to Flynn Fag, if I could.
I'm sorry, the question again?
When the original specific plan was done, was it ever discussed, contemplated that it could be a pedestrian throughway versus a vehicular?
I don't believe that was specifically discussed back in 2016 when the downtown plan was amended. It was intended that there would be a throughway. The plan specifically mentions a vehicular throughway, but I don't believe it was discussed relative to just making it a pedestrian street.
Okay. And then, I know this was brought up, but if the, if the projects where the current, and I don't remember what blocks they are, where the current graffiti park and pit are, are built, if and when anything is built, would that potentially, would this potentially be an emergency, would having that, that street vacated cause any emergency-related issues?
I don't believe that it would, because you would still have access on Bellardo and the portion between Bellardo and Palm Canyon. So that would give access to all sides of that proposed building, and I don't think there would be any impact. Obviously, we'd like to look at that further.
Okay. And when the original park, downtown park plan, I know that there were images that showed the statue in the park, was that ever decided by council or was that just like a placeholder?
It was a placeholder. It was intended that the east side of the park would be available for sculpture, and for that reason, we have pavers in that area as opposed to the landscaping and the lawn areas that we have elsewhere in the park.
Okay. And that space is still reserved?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I have comments, but those are my questions. I don't know if people want to ask other questions first?
Councilmember Middleton?
Excuse me, I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Ballinger, following the decision that council made to have a temporary vacation of the street, the committee to relocate Marilyn, as I understand it, filed a lawsuit. Could you give us just an overview of what has progressed in that lawsuit and where, what the decisions have been made by the judge to date?
Sure, absolutely. So you are correct that the committee to relocate Marilyn filed lawsuit challenging the city's closure of that portion of Museum Way. Their arguments were that the closure was not a temporary closure as allowed under the California Vehicle Code, and they also argued that the city did not conduct adequate environmental review under SEQA. Two trial judges, both at the preliminary injunction stage as well as at a subsequent, what's called a demur stage, ruled that the city had appropriately closed the street and that the committee plaintiffs had not met their statute of limitations in bringing their SEQA lawsuit. They subsequently appealed, and the Court of Appeal ruled this last year that overruled the trial court decision and ruled that the three-year closure is not temporary, and also that the committee plaintiffs had not, that they had met their statute of limitations, that they hadn't missed their statute of limitations under SEQA. And so the Court of Appeal sent the matter back to the trial court, and the trial court has scheduled a number of hearings over the next few months. There is a hearing on the underlying causes of action that the committee plaintiffs brought. That is scheduled for February of 2024. And then there is also a motion for preliminary injunction that the committee plaintiffs have filed that is being heard, I believe, in December. There is also another motion that has been brought by P.S. Resorts, asking the court to stay the legal proceedings pending the outcome of any decision on these, these matters, the specific plan and the possible street vacation. That motion for stay is scheduled to be heard in early December.
And did any of the courts make any judgments as to the merits of whether or not the statue was appropriate or inappropriate in its location, or any of the other arguments that we've heard one way or another about the economic impact of the statue?
No, the courts didn't really rule on that. They were, they were really ruling just on kind of the language of the California Vehicle Code, whether it was temporary, and also on SEQA statute of limitations arguments.
And Mayor Protam gave some large numbers regarding the amount of legal costs to date, but I want to dig into those numbers. How much approximately have we spent as a city in defending this lawsuit?
Of that dollar amount, I would estimate the city has spent approximately $150,000, somewhere around there.
And plaintiffs have incurred legal fees of approximately how much?
We were advised earlier this year, I believe it was around May or June, that they had incurred approximately $350,000. I'm assuming those dollars may have gone up since the pleadings have occurred since then, with regard to the motions that I just mentioned.
And if this matter were to continue to play out, do we have any estimate as to what the legal cost on both sides are likely to be over the course of just the next year? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but...
I would probably guess around the same amount. Again, there are, there are three or four hearings scheduled over the next few months, and so I suspect the attorneys in my office are going to be busy, as well as the plaintiff's lawyers, and as well as P.S. Resorts. They have engaged legal counsel, and they're representing their interests as well, so probably around the same amount.
So potentially, by the end of this year, we're looking at the potential of something approaching a million dollars in total legal fees?
That would be a fair amount, yes. Fair estimate, I would say.
And if plaintiffs are successful, who's going to be responsible for that fee, for those fees?
If plaintiffs are successful, I would imagine they would bring a motion for attorney's fees. It would then be up to the court to determine whether, A, they were successful, and B, whether they are entitled to their attorney's fees under what's called a private attorney general theory. If the court were to award those to, to the plaintiffs, then I suspect they would be looking to us, possibly P.S. Resorts, but certainly to the city.
All right. So as a member of this council, I'm looking at the potential that we could be on the hook for as much as a million dollars in legal fees just to get through 2024.
Again, I think that would be a fair estimate, yes.
All right, thank you. I think we need to keep in mind just how enormously expensive this litigation has become and the potential of how enormous it can become. I want to move on to a couple of other questions. If we were to adopt the ordinance based on the petitions that have been presented to us, what would be the legal options available to the plaintiffs and those who are opposed to the placement of the Forever Marilyn statue in its current location?
Well, I don't want to draw a roadmap for them. I would ask, I would guess that they would still participate in the proceedings. You know, I mentioned that we would still have the street vacation proceedings. They previously indicated a desire to participate in those. I suspect they would probably weigh in if and when those came before the Planning Commission and City Council. They have indicated, you know, a productivity to litigation, so I wouldn't be surprised if they challenged either the street vacation proceedings or potentially even the council decision. As I mentioned, they submitted a comment letter objecting to various procedures. While I don't think the council has violated any law in terms of these proceedings, it is a decision point that I could, I could see them potentially litigating.
All right. And if we adopt an ordinance or if we hold an election, what impact does that potentially have in terms of the litigation as it moves forward?
Well, as I mentioned, P.S. Resorts has filed a motion with the court, asking the court to stay the proceedings, to kind of conserve judicial resources as well as legal resources of all of the parties while this matter is pending. And so I suspect that if the council submitted this to the voters, P.S. Resorts and potentially the city would argue that it makes sense to hold off on that litigation, because, as I mentioned, it's proven costly. If the council takes a vote today to adopt the measure, then the arguments would probably be a little bit different before the court. So that's how I could envision it affecting the litigation.
So would not part of the adoption of the ordinance then be a process of conducting the SEQA inquiry that was called for, if this was a permanent vacation, and conducting any other public hearings that would be at issue? And would we not, at that point, be resolving the issues that the court has found fault with?
So if the council were to adopt this specific plan amendment, then yes, city staff would continue processing the application for street vacation, which is on file, and would bring that to the Planning Commission and City Council in due course. And were the council to adopt that street vacation, following either the council's adoption of this specific plan or the voters' adoption of this specific plan, then I believe that the underlying objections of the, of the committee plaintiffs would be moot. Now, they may still have arguments as to maybe their entitlement to attorney's fees or whatnot under, under their existing lawsuit, but the underlying kind of gist of their argument that the street hasn't been properly closed, I think, would be moot at that point.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Hey, Jeff, can you just restate what you were just talking about? So if we move forward on, today on one of A, B, or C, the vacation process, that's going to continue whether we do A, B, or C, or D?
Correct, yes.
And who initiated that?
That was filed, I believe it was the same, the same individuals, I think, either P.S. Resorts or representatives of P.S. Resorts.
And how long would that process take?
Probably four to six months if we did a negative declaration. It might take longer if we were doing an environmental impact report. That has not been determined yet, but I would, I would estimate probably three to four months, again, if we did a mitigated negative declaration or a negative declaration under SEQA.
And SEQA is going to apply in this situation?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay. So regardless of options, any of the options that are in front of us today, plaintiff may continue pursuing the, what is in front of the court today?
I suspect they would, yes.
And the court, nothing we do today is going to nullify anything that happens in the court?
Correct, not automatically, no.
Yeah. So it would be the next hearing, which is when, that we go to the judge again, that the judge would even hear that we've taken one of these steps today?
December 12th, I believe. It's, it's next week.
And then, but if we put it on the, if we move to put it on the March ballot, we need to make that decision within how many days of today?
Within 10 days.
I'm sorry, Matt, Matt chime in?
Yeah, Jim, you have the exact dates?
If the goal is to place this measure on the March 5th, 2024 ballot, the deadline would be this Friday. So that is why staff was suggesting the council take action today on placing the measure on the March 5th ballot, if that is the intention of the council, because otherwise the window closes on doing the March 5th election. It would be a later date, probably in April, or the November election date is always available. And of course, you know, the adoption of it outright is available.
Yeah, okay. So we don't have the luxury of waiting to see where the court is going to weigh in from this, in order to get it on the March ballot?
Not for our election.
Yeah, okay. I just have comments next.
Okay, thank you. And that was Jim Priest, one of our other attorneys that just spoke about that timing.
And he's good at keeping those dates, so that's why I had him here.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the public, and I apologize to the public for being remote today. I, my kid is sick and I don't have childcare, and so here I am doing this remotely. I just have a few questions, a little bit about planning, Flynn. If you could just describe, we heard a lot of public comment about, you know, the original arguments and the work that was done for the specific plan and the View Corridor and all of that. And so I know that this is primarily a legal staff report, because, you know, we have an initiative in front of us that we now need to decide. But could you speak, Flynn, if you may, if you can, a little bit about just the background on the planning document and how this... on the planning document and how this fits in?
So speaking to the issues of streets and view corridors and intentions of the plan, obviously, as it was looked at for the redevelopment of the Palm Springs Mall site, which consisted essentially of a super block with little vehicular or pedestrian connections, one of the goals of the plan was to reestablish a street network on the site. In going to a former question from Mayor Protem about Museum Way, was that intended for vehicles or pedestrians? Going specifically to a page in the plan, it talks about it being a public street. However, at the same time, the plan also talks about the importance of both vehicular and pedestrian connections. And then furthering that idea of a connected grid were the concepts of view corridors and in particular, an east-west view corridor. So while it does talk about vehicles and pedestrians, I think the, the overwhelming concept from that redesign of the plan or amendment to the plan was opening up connections, be they vehicular or pedestrian, but most importantly, having visual connections from Palm Canyon through the site. And so I think those were kind of the highlighting principles, if you will, of the amended plan document. And does that help to answer your question?
Yeah, and if you can, just for council and the public, or it might be to the city attorneys, explain our ability and the process for amending downtown specific plan or also the street vacation decision in, in more specific detail for public commenters and those listening?
Well, the normal process for adopting or amending a specific plan would involve an application either by a private applicant or sometimes they are initiated by the city council. That process would involve, you know, various reviews by city staff and third parties, public agencies. It would go before the planning commission, before a notice public hearing. It would make its way to the city council as part of a notice public hearing. And a street vacation would be a similar process. It would be either initiated by a private third party or initiated by the city itself, go through staff review, review by other public agencies, and then come before the planning commission for a recommendation and a decision ultimately by the city council. This process, it's before the city council, is with regard, again, only to the specific plan amendment, and it is, it is recognizing and exercising the right that we have in California to adopt legislative matters by the voters with the caveat, as I mentioned, that it make a, kind of a stop at the city council before it goes before the voters.
So typically, in a normal process, the city council has the ability to amend a specific plan with, you know, different changing of the times or different, you know, policy preferences or land use preferences, or we could do so at the application of a party.
Oh, absolutely. The, the, both the general plan and the city's various specific plans are, are policy and planning documents that represent the visions of, of the city at any particular time, and so those are often amended. The city council just updated its, some of the portions of its general plan in terms of the housing element, and, and those are done quite regularly. And actually, the general plan is required to be updated frequently just in order to update those goals and visions.
Thank you. And then you said we have an application from a party for the amendment to the specific plan that is also contained in this initiative, is that right?
I believe I mentioned that there was a application for a street vacation that has been filed by P S Resorts. What's before the council with regard to the specific plan is, it was the, the initiative process, which starts with a request to prepare some documents so that they can circulate them for signatures. It's not the normal specific plan amendment application that, you know, a, a party might use to, to amend a specific plan through the, the other processes.
Thank you, but they could, any party could submit an application at any time to amend the specific plan?
Yes.
This one?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I'm trying to find the actual language for the initiative, and I see that there's two resolutions, resolutions in front of us. You know, the title is proposing to amend the downtown Palm Springs specific plan to facilitate the vacation of a portion of Museum Way between Bolardo Road and Museum Drive in order to facilitate the permanent installation of the Forever Maryland statue at that location. So can you just explain for us in the public how those two things are connected? I think Mayor Protem was getting at this too, but if you could explain that more in depth. So I saw the changes to the specific plan that are contained in the packet and track changes, and then future decisions would come to the council about the Maryland statue, is that right?
Correct. So what is before the city council today is simply an action on a planning document, a specific plan, not the street vacation itself and not the agreement between the city and P S Resorts to place the statue in that location. So the council is being asked to decide whether it wishes to either adopt that specific plan amendment today or to submit that specific plan amendment to the voters. And so should the council adopt the specific plan or the voters adopt the specific plan, then that would kind of lay the groundwork for a street vacation, which has been applied for by P S Resorts, which is making its way through the city staff review right now. That application would make its way to the planning commission for a recommendation at a public meeting and then make its way to the city council at a notice public hearing for the council to decide on whether to vacate the street. Even if the city council adopted that street vacation at, at some later date, the council would still be tasked with deciding whether or not, and under what terms or time period, to allow the statue to, to be at that location.
So technically, this is an initiative to amend the specific plan. Is it binding the city to also permanently install the Forever Maryland statue?
No, it does not, and, and that should be clear for, for the public. It, it amends the specific plan to allow the council to vacate the street and allow the council, should it wish to, allow the statue to remain in that location, but it does not bind the city council to either vacate the street or, or, or allow that statue to be there. Theoretically, the council could adopt the specific plan or the voters could adopt the specific plan amendment, and then the council could decide either to not vacate the street or the council could decide to vacate the street and, and still not allow the statue to be there, allow the statue to be there for a year, move the statue. The council still has those options.
Thank you. I think that's an important point, and, let me move this. I think that's an important point, and for me, I'll just say, you know, coming to this, I've been on city council since 2017. I did serve on the Downtown Park Subcommittee just for a short time. Councilmember J R Roberts served with me. He had been on the planning commission and had a lot more history. So I will say, you know, the time that I was on the Downtown Park Subcommittee with all of our other, you know, commissions represented and other stakeholders, we did talk about Museum Way and Maryland and placement of that. And I'll just say, from a policy matter, just to share a comment, and then, you know, we can talk about specifics, I fully support having pedestrian. I really like the comment from the public commenter, who's the architect, who said, you know, "We've done so much work to make this pedestrian-friendly, to develop a downtown park, to have, you know, pedestrian access and connection from, you know, Palm Canyon to the art museum. We're also working on connection from Palm Canyon to, you know, the Tribe section 14 amenities that they're offering, and then also our convention center." So as a policy matter, I really support vacating streets for pedestrian access. We've been talking for a number of years, really, about having Museum Way be a place where we can have art installations and like an art walk that welcomes people to, from the downtown park or Palm Canyon to the museum. I think already the street is unnecessary from a circulation standpoint. You don't, you know, even if that were opened up, you would likely go around it. And so I really don't see the street as necessary. I know that's not, I mean, we're considering the changing of the specific plan, so that is relevant, and it already works as pedestrian access, the way that it's bricked and the way that the, we've used boulevards to protect the area and so forth. So, you know, the, I know there's been a lot shared about Maryland and the history of Maryland and how she would feel about it and the Me Too movement, and there's a lot here. Some, I agree with the mayor, is not relevant to debate, and some is relevant to debate. And I appreciate the vibrant public discourse, especially about, you know, our role in history and, and all of, you know, the importance of Maryland and our brand and violence against women and all these things we care about. But very big picture, sitting here as a council member, thinking about the specific plan for downtown, I very much think we should amend it to allow for pedestrian access there and to facilitate, you know, opening that up for art installation. I very much would like to have a public process and appreciate this process of an initiative or if the city council wants to, you know, place it on the ballot or adopt or order a report, you know, I'm not sure how we best get there with all the stakeholders, but I just wanted to say, very big picture, thinking about land use, which is in front of us today, I do think that's the best land use decision for the future of downtown in the interest of the museum, the downtown park, the local businesses, and everyone else who's impacted, and it supports our other land use to increase pedestrian access, increase pedestrian safety, et cetera. So I just wanted to start there and then happy to defer to the mayor and council about actually looking at the options in front of us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Did we have, yeah, were comments or, Councilmember Holstich started us off, so if anyone wants to start with additional comments, you're welcome to. Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the, the input from all of the council members. You know, one of the things that has, you know, hit me through all of these conversations has been the mention of the museum. And what's important to me is to really look at, how do we protect the museum and continue to support this incredible treasure that we have in the city of Palm Springs? And, you know, looking at some of the, the feedback that has come forward during this entire process, a few subjects constantly come forward, and, and that's the historical landmark designation that the museum has and how important this view corridor is to, to have from Palm Canyon. You know, but it, it, it strikes me that, you know, the museum stood for 43 years and has achieved incredible notoriety. We've grown the collection at the museum significantly. It's become a truly a world-class museum, but it was designed and the site was picked to be behind a shopping center and a parking lot, and it has stood for 43 years. It stood for 43 years in that situation where there's a shopping center that has been in front of it. It has only just been recently that...
We can address that another time.
The museum has thrived during this time period. Other than some financial up and downs, the museum has thrived. And I think, you know, it's important to me to see that it's continued to grow. So we, it grew from somebody 5,000 square feet, it's gone to 124,000 square feet. It would be wonderful to continue to see it grow for the future. You know, the, the park opened in 219, and the installation came in '21. So we've, there's been a lot of support to move the statue based on the historical connection to the museum, the historical designation. And I know it takes a long time to get the designations in place, but the designation came in 2016. And I think what we're seeing is there's incredible credit, as our mayor alluded to, that leadership at the, it makes a huge difference in the success of any museum. And I think what we've seen in the last three years is the museum is continuing to thrive and really become that community center that the mission intends it to be. And so I'm curious about some of the numbers, and one of the presenters talked about attendance. And when we look at, you know, the museum's information, they said for fiscal 2021, the museum's membership steadily climbed to 3,340 members in the fall of '22. In terms of visitation levels, levels have tracked well above our pre-pandemic levels. And in FY 2021, the visitor total was 119,000. In '22, the museum saw nearly 12% increase to 134,000 visitors. Revenue grew over that same time period. Then we look at a, a specific example. Thursday night, city council has supported the free Thursday nights at the museum for many years. And when we were learning about the Thursday nights continuing and going forward just earlier this summer, the museum leadership shared with us that the Thursday nights have really become central to the museum's efforts in becoming more accessible to underrepresented communities in the region and really transforming the museum into a festive and welcoming locale for families, millennials, and Gen Xers. What's important with that, I think, is that they, the museum has witnessed a substantial increase in attendance, even well beyond and surpassing the pre-COVID numbers. In fiscal year '22 to '23, the museum observed a remarkable 37% rise in attendance compared to the year prior in COVID. This year, the museum is projecting to see over 58,000 more visitors just on Thursday night, and, and that says a lot about the, the draw and the attraction and the, the wonderful treasure that the museum is to our, our community and to the incredible job the museum board and leadership are doing. Just today, in our public comment, we've heard, and leading up to today's meeting, for me personally, keeping track of the, the comments that people have made, specifically, it's overwhelming, four to one, the feedback is, our community wants to see this statue stay where it is, where it is. Incredible feedback in the supportive column. Very little feedback is coming in on asking to move the statue. You know, I think today, we are thankful to have heard from tourism industry officials. Our downtown business community has spoken out very loud and very clear on the impact that the statue is having on their businesses and the businesses downtown and the fact that they strongly want to see this statue stay where it is. that they strongly want to see this statue stay where it is. Civic associations have come out to support and residents have even taken their time out of their day to come out in favor. So I, I do support moving forward with the option C to amend the downtown plan so we can move this process forward and try to find as, as quick of a solution as we possibly can and to do whatever we can to, to stop spending the dollars that are being spent on something that should be so simple for us, in my opinion.
Thank you. And just for the record, the art museum was built in 1958 and the plaza came in 1967. So the museum does predate the plaza, just-
Thank you for that.
So, Councilmember Middleton?
So I want to thank everyone who has spoken today, everyone who has emailed me. I'm not sure who broke my laptop over the course of the last week, but it might have been all of the various emails that have come in. Staff is repairing that laptop, though. The, this has been an emotional issue for any number of individuals and I greatly appreciate that. It speaks to the devotion that so many people have for our community. And we are a very diverse community. We take pride in the diversity that we have. And thousands, millions of people come to Palm Springs each and every year for a variety of reasons. But one of the most important things that they come for is the sense that absolutely everyone is welcome and that there will be amenities that will be open and available to people of very, very different tastes and very, very different interests. So I think it's important that we always maintain that sense of welcome and that sense of respect for individuals who have tastes that are different than our own and have interests that are different than our own. So let me prestate that right at the very beginning. Councilmember DeHart spoke, I think, quite well in terms of the impact that it appears that the Forever Marilyn statue has had in increasing interest in the art museum, in increasing attendance. Individuals that come to look at the statue go on very frequently on Thursday evenings to investigate the art museum. And they are often, very, very often, individuals who would have not come to see the art museum but for the fact that they wanted to see the Marilyn statue and they wanted to see Palm Springs. And in the course of venturing into the museum, they get to see the incredible treasure that has been put together by this community over decades and that we want to be there for many, many decades to come. And they get to experience the incredible architecture that is also a part of this community, something that's available to everyone. What I am interested in is maintaining that sense of welcome for everyone and that sense that we have amenities available to everyone. But just as close behind that, I am extremely interested in bringing to a halt this lawsuit that on procedural grounds is costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars and an enormous investment of time. And if we can fix the procedures in order to bring this lawsuit to a conclusion, then we should be doing that. Now, I appreciate that everyone has a right to come forward, but what we have here is the potential for the taxpayers to be on the hook for hundreds of thousands of dollars of plaintiff attorney fees for the fact that a appellate court has made a determination that three years is longer than temporary. They didn't tell us whether it was two years or one year or six months or what it might be, but just simply that three years was too long. And for that, the taxpayers are at risk of hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. I think we should move forward with the adoption of the ordinance because what has been determined over the course of the last three years is how incredibly popular this statue is to an incredibly diverse number of people. And there were many, many, many arguments that were made three years ago when this was first put forward as to what kinds of terrible outcomes would happen if the statue was there. The arguments made by those who did not want to see the statue there have not come to fruition. The argument made by the proponents that people would find this to be an attractive amenity that would bring a smile to their face and that they would enjoy having their picture taken at, has in fact come true. It happens all the time. I use Bellardo personally on a very, very regular basis. I can count on a handful, the number of times I have driven by Bellardo and not had someone standing there, usually large groups of people standing there enjoying the statue and then moving on to enjoy other amenities within Palm Springs. Vacating the street and moving forward with all of the process to vacate the street and allow it to be a place where there are many demonstrations of art and many diverse demonstrations of art is something I think we should do and I will support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers Middleton, DeHart, for your comments. I appreciate it. I will say, when I did first take office, I did ask, as the city attorney mentioned, whether I would be able to weigh in on this because I, my business leases a property at the end of Museum Way and I, I secretly hoped that they would say, no, you can't weigh in. So, and I say that not because I don't understand my, my job, but because I think 80 to 90% of the people who spoke today and last time are either personal friends, who spoke on both sides, are either personal friends or people I do business with or just people who I have great respect for. And so it is, it is sort of a tough position because whatever happens, no one, not everyone's going to be happy. A little bit on Marilyn, I will say ironically, I think 40, it was almost 40 years ago, I wrote a college essay on whether Marilyn Monroe was a feminist or a victim. I wish I could find that paper, but it was before computers, so I don't have it. And I will also, for the person who said it's a straight male icon, I will say it's also a gay male icon, just so you know. But I did say when Marilyn was first put at this spot, and I said it to the then head of the Arts Commission, that this should be a teaching moment, that it should be people to weigh in on what they thought about. And, and the discussions that we've had in social media and council and everywhere about whether it's art, whether it's not, whether it's kitsch, whether it's sexist, I, I think that conversation is actually really important. And it probably, we had more discussion about what is art when the statue came than anything. And I thought it was extremely helpful, but this is not really so much about that. And yes, well, my, at least my business is at the other end of that throughway, walkway street. And the idea that you have these two historic class one buildings flanking either end, I, I think was important. And when they first opened up Museum Way, I made a lot of suggestions, like, why don't we create this, this more visual sense between what is the town and country and the museum of our historic architecture? I said, why, why don't we have a sign on Palm Canyon that says there's a museum here? I mean, quite honestly, people don't know there's a museum who happen to be wandering by. We had one year, I think it was for the Warhol exhibit, there was castle banners along the street, and I've said, those should be there all the time, like in most cities, where they say, what is the art that is there? And I'm not sure why, before me, I don't show why that didn't happen. But I do think our mid-century modern architecture is probably one of our key economic drivers. And I know a lot of tourism studies will say, well, not everybody understands mid-century modern, but, you know, which is probably true if you use those terms, but everybody who comes understands this retro, cool, vintage vibe that Palm Springs has. And even if they don't know what it is or they, they're not experts on it. And so I do think highlighting our museum is, is very important. And, and with no disrespect to the two other executive directors for the museum here, who, who I think are great, it has, what has become more apparent recently is bringing the community to the museum and the museum to the community. And I don't think, you know, Marilyn may have attracted a lot of people to the museum, but I think the efforts of our, our new, our museum staff, which built upon decades of great expertise, has really come to, to fruition in sort of getting our, our community and the art experts involved in that. I do want to say, when the park, when I first saw the plans for the park and there was a spot for Marilyn, I, I do think that probably should have been where it was put. And maybe, maybe still. But I also thought at the time, we should have had a real amphitheater and we should have had a large open space for events. I know it was brought up, the Modernism Week in 2020 was the most successful and that is when we had a big tent where that downtown park is, which we no longer have room for. And ironically, I think it was in 2020, PS Resorts, Palm Springs Hospitality Association, Measure J, Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, all said, let's try and create more of an event space at that park or hold off on building out that park. And now it's beautiful. It's a beautiful Marc Rios-designed park. I'm not sure whether the statue would work as well there. I walked it the other day, but it is something I could, you know, revisit, but we are also revisiting whether we create a real amphitheater. I think that, that whole space should have been a community and meeting place, well, sorry to take Camp's words, a, a community space. And they talk about in societies, people have three places, you know, they have their home, their work, and they have another place that's important. And it can be a gym, it can be a park or a downtown. And that's what we wanted to create, which also leads me to the point that this should have always been a pedestrian street. Whether the statue is there or not, I feel strongly that this should be a pedestrian street so that we could have, whether it's other art or whether it's a walkway to the museum. And, and we haven't, we have a commitment to sustainability and creating more walking and creating more bicycling. And we shouldn't be saying, well, we all like that, but we want vehicles here or this comes up in different, we need parking lots. Which, by the way, there are a thousand parking spaces right at that space, right where the, where the statue is. So I think that is there. So I am very conflicted in this. However, the idea that this should be for vehicles, I don't actually, I can't support. I do think this should be a pedestrian street. And when you see the chambers, concerts there, other events, you see people spilling out into the street and how it actually, they go into the museum or they go into a restaurant or a store, they just walk around and it creates something, a vibrant downtown. I think, I mean, I'm in favor of having less vehicular streets downtown, though that's another subject. And, and so I think this process now of saying whether we should go through an election or adopting to, to change the specific plan, when we still have two more steps, one of which is vacating the street and the third is whether the statue remains. I find any argue, I find it hard to make the argument that this should be vehicular. I understand people who don't, if that's the only way to not have Marilyn or supporting that, but if my role here is to decide whether this should be a pedestrian or vehicular street and whether that should go to the ballot or whether we should adopt that, it does not seem to make sense to spend the money to go to the ballot. It's, it's another hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that when we have so many more needs in our, in our city. Now, I am not saying that I would want a permanent location for the statue because I think permanent statues have raised lots of issues in our country and we, not only because of what the statue is, but because we are developing the downtown still. I mean, we're, we're have several plots of land there that will eventually hopefully be built up and that could change how it all flows and how things work. So I think that, excuse me, I'm sorry. So that's where I find this, if the, if the issue at hand is just about whether this should be a pedestrian or vehicular street, then I think it's pretty clear and even that this really should be pedestrian. Separately, we can, we're going to have a discussion on whether Marilyn stays or whether it's temporary or permanent. But I, that's where I am coming out. And I realize that this would be, if we made it vehicular, it'd be an easy way just to get rid of the statue, but I don't think that for a long-term urban planning is ideal for our city. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I think the, the street being closed makes a lot of sense. However, you, there were signatures collected asking people if they wanted to put something on the ballot. Not saying whether or not you fully agree with this statement, it's asking, do you want this to go on a ballot? Do you want this to go to the election? And so for me, yes, I agree that the street should be closed. Whether or not the statue is there is an entirely different subject, but I think having the street closed makes a lot of sense. It does allow this corridor to the museum, which I appreciate. But if we were just going to move forward with a street vacation, then why was a ballot measure brought forward at all? We could be having an entirely different meeting. So I, I support putting this on the ballot. This entire process has been very frustrating. There's been a lot of misinformation from so many different parties. And it has been an incredible amount of money that we've had to spend to handle this. And I think that everyone wants to move forward with this. For me, process is extremely important and if I had signed that ballot measure, I would be very upset if the council decided for me, when my, when the point of me signing was to support putting it, bringing it to an election. So that's why I can't support just passing an ordinance. That said, if one of my colleagues wants to make a motion, please go ahead. Councilmember DeHart.
So I move that we adopt paragraph C to amend the downtown Palm Springs specific plan to facilitate the vacation of a portion of Museum Way between Bellardo Road and Museum
Hey, do we have a second for that? Hey, do we have a second for that?
I second that motion.
So we have a motion made by Councilmember DeHart, a second by Councilmember Holstich. And then if we can all vote. Do we? Oh, yes, sorry, we have to do a roll call because Councilmember Holstich is online. Please.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes, and if I could just note, we didn't have further discussion, but in the interest of spending taxpayer dollars on an election, I'm voting yes to support this decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Mayor Garner?
No.
Motion carries for one.
All right. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned.
Mayor, if we could real quickly just have the ordinance read.
Oh, pardon me. Please read the ordinance before we adjourn.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, to amend the downtown Palm Springs specific plan to facilitate the vacation of a portion of Museum Way between Bellardo Road and Museum Drive in order to facilitate the permanent installation of the Forever Maryland statue at that location pursuant to California Election Code Section 9215A.
Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned and our next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, December 14th at 5:30 PM.